A bunch of them when I got elected. It is not an easy document. Matter of fact, the phrase I use, the U.S. Constitution is a demanding mistress. She requires a lot of you. She requires a lot of you. She gives a lot back if you honor her. We're not doing that in America today. I'm concerned that our Constitution is becoming irrelevant because anything you ignore becomes irrelevant. And that's what they're doing. Day after day, time after time, the behavior of our politicians does not match the accountabilities in the Constitution. And the third filter of those principles that we passed around there, I'm sincere about those. A lot of people don't even, most groups of Republicans, for example, most of the people in the room do not even know those exist. As a matter of fact, only seven of the 50 state websites, Republican websites, even have those principles listed on the website. I'm happy to say that North Carolina is one of those. If you try to find them on the national website, you'll spend a good bit of time. I think you'll have to do at least six clicks. Go to this room, go to that room, go to this room. They're not easy to find unless they've moved them in the past couple of weeks. And that's interesting. That says something. You know, what do you put in the closet? In the back of the closet? Or down in the basement? Or up in the attic? What do you put up there? Things that no longer are important. And that's a concern. So those are my three filters. In my pocket, I mean this sincerely, I had a guy come up to me a while back. Folks who occasionally, nice people, try to hand me cash and say, here, I want to contribute to your campaign. I took cash money from a guy one time in my political history. It was when I was first running, the first time. Guy said, come on over, let's sit down, talk. Fella I knew. And after we talked a bit, he reached in his pocket, handed me a wad of money. And I took it and I said, well, thank you. And I'll record this and I appreciate it. And I walked out and I felt this kind of yucky. Didn't feel right. Something was wrong with that. I've never taken money since then. Matter of fact, I make people mad at me. Made somebody mad at me last night, tried to hand me some cash. Won't take cash. I'll hand you an envelope and say, gosh, I'm grateful, thank you. Can I give you this? Would you mind handing it to Kathy? I think you wound up with some. Somebody else, I try to avoid that. I'm not comfortable with it. But a guy held this and tried to hand it to me. It's a silver dollar. I said, gosh, that's interesting. Lay it right down there in that table. Let's talk about this. What is this? And he explained it to me. He says, it's a peace dollar. It was mint in 1922. It's called a peace dollar. Says it on there. It was minted to honor peace following World War I. He says, I like that theme of peace. I think you do too. And I said, yes. He says, it's also got Lady Liberty on it and I believe you like liberty. And I do. And he said, it represents sound monetary policy too. This coin, when I got elected to Asheville City Council in 2001, was worth about $5.50 if memory serves me correctly. Today, it's worth triple that. And it's been as high as $20 for one of these in recent months. I have an idea it will get higher. The problem with this thing being worth more is our dollar is worth less. And our economy is based not on this, but our dollar. And that's scary. If you ever catch me violating one of those filters, don't have to yell at me. Just come up and say, I want my coin. I have one of these with me all the time. I've got a stack of them. Bought a bunch more at the gun show this week. Not because I anticipate giving them away, but I want to be true to that. If you ever catch me violating those filters, I've got this in my pocket and I'll hand it to you. They're important to me. I believe those filters are what ground you and keep you sane and keep you on track and keep you focused to something that matters to our future and keep you on the right track as a politician. So I'll hold on to them no matter how many people ridicule me, make fun of me, call me mean names, give me a hard time, all the other things that go on. Some of the people in this room, you heard anything about some of the vile things that were said about me here recently? Heard about that? Yeah, some pretty threatened family and some interesting things. It's amazing how venom can get, how venomous people can become. It was over illegal immigration, by the way. I like this county. I'm married to a Canton girl from Haywood County. I like her. Grateful, grateful to have her in my life. She's a nurse. She's working tonight. She's come with me sometimes. Her mama has Alzheimer's here in Haywood County. She comes back and forth about every other day to alternate with her sister to take care of her. If you've had experience with Alzheimer's, it's tough. It's tough. It's a form of death. She comes home with a tear in her eyes most days. So I'll finish by saying this. I'm not here, I'm not running for Congress to seduce people into voting for me. I'm not here to make hollow promises to people to be everything that they want me to be or to give them everything that they want. I had a wonderful experience with that in Cherokee and the Snowbird community a few weeks ago. I was so impressed with those folks. Cherokee are mad at me right now. Not all of them, but some of them. Because I challenged some of their lobbying, some of their political practices, some of the double standards they play. I think there's some things going on that are wrong. Nothing against the Cherokee people. As a matter of fact, I can tell you that visit to the Snowbird community took me to a higher level. That was probably one of the best meetings I've had with any group. I saw more dignity, more maturity, more insight from that group than any group I've encountered yet, except this one, of course. Y'all an exception. It was wonderful. Now, they were mad at me. As a matter of fact, when I pulled up there, and I was glad, I had a radio program in another county. And when I went to that radio program, there was a guy there and said, well, where are you going next? I said, it's Snowbird community. I was by myself. He said, well, can I go with you? They seemed real insistent. And I said, no, no, I'm fine. No, let me go with you. So he went with me. I was glad he went with me. I got there, I'm putting up a sign by the road where we're coming in. Lady pulls up and says, you don't have any business here. You need to go home. What are you doing here? I said, I was invited. Come down and join us. No, who invited you? I mentioned a name. She said, well, I'm the director of this place. Why'd they invite you? That's a pretty hard way to begin the meeting. But it got better from there. And one of the things that impressed me a lot is they started, a few folks started asking me, what you gonna do for us? And I said the same thing to them. I say to veterans groups, and I say to groups of elderly folks, I say to teachers groups, any other group I'm before. I am not here to promise you a special deal. We are in this together. I will promise you fairness. I will promise you honesty. I will promise you that government will honor its word to you. But that's on. And they applaud it. And that surprised me. And it was a sincere applause. Those folks in Cherokee County got it. They understood, not in Cherokee County, the Snowbird community, the Cherokee, the Snowbird community, they got it. It's not just about me and stealing our share of the pie. It's about us together. And that's what I'm gonna be about. And I'll do it sincerely and fairly. I don't care if you have a hole in your pocket, money in your pocket, tobacco in your pocket, who you are, I'll treat you the same. So it's my honor to be here today. And I'm grateful for you being here today. I'm gonna come around here and sit on that school and take some questions. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Johnny Kurate here at Waynesville.
Yes, ma'am.
I support you in your candidacy. And I will vote for you.
Thank you.
Definitely not for Heath Shuler. However, I would like to ask something of you. I would like for you to reconsider.
I better get another crank of water.
Okay. I would like for you to reconsider your stand regarding immigration and illegal aliens. I'm a bilingual person, so I deal with them in their own language. I was fortunate enough to live in South America for 16 years and Venezuela, so I learned the language and know the people. I understand customs that are different than ours. And I've been watching this problem and I've studied the problem and I've thought about it a lot. And I listen to all the arguments and all the stands that we all take. You and a lot of people call those people, okay, illegal aliens. I call them undocumented immigrants. And do you know, do you know what they call themselves? They call themselves undocumented workers. That's the word they use for themselves. Are you an undocumented worker? Yes, I am. No, I'm not. Okay? So there's a difference in everything that we're saying.
Difference in language.
Yes. Okay. If we were to start.
It's all, I want, I hear a few mumblings, it's all be patient, because this is a question of courage and I'm glad you're asking it.
Yes. Okay. And I feel like the true root of this problem starts with how they enter this country. Okay? And if we were to understand the process that they go through to come, we might be able to document them rather than not document them.
Can I jump on your question?
Just one second. And then, but if they're documented, then we can start to deal with the other issues that are, that happen because they come into this country. But I think it's important that we get them documented.
I was wondering, we all go answer your phone.
Now, the problem starts at the level of the consulate in, say, Mexico or Venezuela or Guatemala or wherever they're coming from.
Can I tackle your question?
And the bottleneck and exactly it's down there.
Can I tackle your question?
I have, yeah, I haven't asked it yet. I'm sorry. Okay?
Fairness to everybody, let's get that question down.
Here comes the question. Okay? What could you do about that problem of documenting those people so that when they do come into this country, they are documented? We know who's here.
Okay.
How could we document them?
First off, I believe you should fix the leak in the boat before you fix the motor. Stop the flow before you start to improve the process. Historically in America, we have absorbed a quarter of a million legal immigrants a year. Today in America, we're absorbing a million legal immigrants a year plus another million or more, they can't really tell, on top of that. That is a flood. We cannot absorb that many people. I'm against that. We do not help the poor of the world by becoming like them. We do, we can, there are too many marbles in the bucket. We cannot absorb it. We can pull ourselves down to their level, but that's wrong. That's not what America's done for the world. We've been a beacon of liberty, opportunity and responsibility. We've shown them a system that can work. We've done a lot of things as a model and example and a place of hope. We should be helping them improve their countries. You know who I blame, blame most for illegal immigration? Mexican government, for starters, because the majority of our illegal immigrants come from Mexico. The Mexican government, government that is so corrupt, does such a poor job of taking care of their people, they're willing to go through the horror of crossing that border and fighting their way up there. Can you imagine how hard that is? How scary that is? I think if I were in that country, I'd be hitting the border too. I understand why they do it. So I blame the Mexican government first and other governments below that. Number two, I blame this government for not enforcing its laws. And that's crucial. And that's why one of the problems that we have today with illegal, I call them illegal aliens, I'm not gonna be, because that's what they are. They're illegal and they're alien to this country. It's not meant as a derogatory term, it's meant as a statement of accuracy. And we can come up with all kinds of language that sounds better and feels better, but I try not to use it. The rule of law is the foundation of the Constitution. My wife is a nurse. She tells me, when I cut myself, you've got a portal for infection there. I think a nursing teacher told her that one time and it echoed in her brain, a portal for infection. The skin is the boundary. It keeps us intact. The same thing is true of the borders of a country. And if your borders are porous, you have a portal for infection. That's wrong. You have to found a country on the rule of law or it will not have a future. You degrade that country into chaos. That's wrong. And the next group I blame are the employers. We were talking about that earlier, I think maybe, maybe before y'all came. Were y'all here? I blame the employers terribly because they are the ones who provide the money and the jobs that feed the flood. And boy, you get in front of one of them and they'll just whoop and well, no, it's not my fault, there are too many rules and I can't figure out how to filter out the bad guys and, you know, and all this stuff. And I'm sorry, but self-service is the part, is the name of the game. And then, and specific answer to your question, I won't change my position on illegal immigration until we stop the flow. We've been there too many times before, where we've made promises, all right, let's grant amnesty, started with President Reagan, let's grant amnesty and then we're gonna fix the system. Let's grant amnesty and then we're gonna fix the system. It doesn't happen. The flow has not stopped. Until we get serious about enforcement, I am not willing to change the laws. When we get serious about enforcing our existing laws... This is my mom's. May I take this? I'm just kidding. My apologies for this. I did exactly the same thing last night. Let's cut this thing off. Thank you for your patience. Give you time to think of another question. There we go. The, where was I? Talk about my mom.
Well, why are, why are these employers hiring these?
Because they're great workers. I'll tell you why, they're great workers. They'll work for less wages, not cheap wages, but less wages than Americans. And one of the big things, they keep their mouth shut and don't give them grief. They are importing an underclass that they can control.
Hello?
That's wrong. I'm sorry. That's exactly what, I know, I talk to them. I talk to them frequently. They're importing, they're bringing Mexico here and they're importing an underclass they can control. And they're good working people. Let me tell you one of the problems with that. I mentioned that dropout rate, 30% in our high schools, 50% for minorities. And folks, that's the physical dropout rate, that's not the mental dropout rate, that's not the kids coming out of school without the skills and the abilities, the education, the talents, developed talents that they need to compete in a tough world. Why are we letting that happen year after year? It's different than when we went to school. I graduated in 1970. Our dropout rate was pretty high then, but it was different. You could go to Beacon Manufacturing and work in the blanket factory for the quote, unquote, the rest of your life, or so we thought. But it's a more competitive world. It's a dangerous world. India and China graduate more honors students than we graduate students. And guess where they send them? To learn engineering and all the sciences. They send them to America and take them back home and get rid of them, steal our lunch down the road. And that's what's gonna happen. So I'm sorry, we're short cutting our own children with this cheap labor pool and we're not raising our hands and shouting, what's wrong with this system? Because we don't need it. So no, I won't change my mind. When we stop the flow, when we start enforcing the law, when we're looking out for our own kids and putting America first and maintaining it as a beacon of sanity, normalcy and stability and liberty for the world, then we can improve our immigration policy. And we need to. But that needs to be the last one of those, not the first one of those, because then we ignore the rest of it. Been there too many times. Next question. Yes, sir. And then we'll hit the gentleman in the back.
Carl, would you clarify your statement about your willingness to support impeaching President Bush?
People, I had a guy the other day, or last night, come up to me and said, I sure wish you'd have said that before you won the primary, by golly, I sure wouldn't have voted for you. Well, I had said it, or a version of it. I had expressed over and over again how disappointed I was in our president for not upholding his oath of office. Same thing for, I said the same thing about Congress. Their oath of office, it's not a ceremony, folks, it's an oath. What part of oath do we not get? An oath is a promise to uphold, and that oath is about upholding the Constitution. And a big part of upholding the Constitution is protecting the country. And this president and the president before him, the president before him, the president before him and so forth, have been guilty of not upholding their oath of office. Now, I'm not about impeaching the president. If I get in office, he'll be gone. I said that as a citizen, that I would support the impeachment of the president. I don't want him impeached. I do want him held accountable. Same thing for Congress. Why did I say that? That wasn't a strategic move. I didn't sit down and play political mastermind to come up with that one. I take the issues as they come up. And when I got that notice that the president, who had promised to put 6,000 National Guard, and that's the word, National Guard troops on the border to supplement the Border Patrol, and instead he just put 3,000 and then he pulled them off, that was the final straw for me. And I wanted to challenge him directly and openly and demonstrate frankly, and I'm serious about this. I don't care if you're a Democrat, Republican or independent. I don't care if you vote for me or not. I don't care if you're rich or poor or who you are. If you're right, I'll support you. If you're wrong, I won't. And it was an opportunity for me to demonstrate that I was serious about that. But the real thing I wanted to say is the rule of law matters and our oath of office matters. And if it doesn't, we're forfeiting the future of our country. So I took no pleasure in saying it. And I'm not, by the way, if anybody in here has ever heard me bash the president, please, aside from, some people consider that bashing, please raise your hand. I won't get mad. Please raise your hand. And nobody in here's heard me do that, because I don't believe that, I think that's a sport that a lot of people participate in. I think it's disrespectful of the office. I don't do it. It's wrong. I don't care if it's Bill Clinton or George Bush, I don't do that. I think it's wrong. But if it's an issue of accountability, I'm the guy to hold up your hand and say, hey, this is wrong. So thank you for asking the question. And I know it's made a lot of people mad at me. I'll accept the consequences of that. I won't back down from my position. I'll do the same thing with Congress, by the way.
With respect to the immigration position you were talking about.
Yes, sir.
If you find yourself in Congress in January, how would you work on that issue? What would be your approach to work on the immigration issue in Congress?
Well, that's a great question. The same way I'd work on any issue. I am not a go along to get along politician. If that's what you're looking for, let's just keep the gentleman we have. We've got 400 and something of them already up there. And if you, everybody that believes they're doing a great job and pleased with how they're solving problems, you know, raise, raise your hand or let's repeat that process. I'm not that way.
Yes, my question is, with those folks here, how you fit in with them?
Okay. It's a good question. Glad you ask it. I'll do it the same way I do it on Nashville City Council. One of the great myths in politics, and I didn't know it was true until I'd been in office and learned over a period of about a year. One of the great myths in politics is you have to go along to get along. Then if, how are you going to make a difference and get a coalition developed for an issue if you're not willing to go along with them? Well, the problem with that is you have to start swapping votes. You have to start stepping away from your principle. Senator Burr had an article in the Hendersonville Times News. I've challenged him and some other, some of my other colleagues on their farm bill vote. And I'm getting right to your question, farm bill vote. I'm sorry, only about 10, 15% of that money is going to small and medium farms. Rest of it's pork and entitlements and other things. He and Senator Dole and Heath Shuler voted to override the president's veto and to support that bill. And Senator Burr said in this article in the Hendersonville Times News, I don't blame Karl Munk Power for what he's saying here. Heck, I agree with him. I had to hold my nose to vote for that bill. I'm not willing to hold my nose. Now, one of the big reasons I'm not willing to hold my nose is because I've been fascinated to learn what will happen if you hold the line instead of holding your nose. If you've got the courage to stand up and fight the system, stand up and illuminate the system, that's one of the greatest tools I have. If you know my name at all, it's because the TV will shine a light on what's going on there, the newspaper will shine a light on what's going on there. And if you're willing to stand firm on principles. Now, you can't do it angrily, negatively, irregantly. You just have to stand firm. And I try always to be respectful on that bench in council. But I stand firm. It's amazing what you can accomplish. Asheville City Council this year, this is arguably the most liberal city council in North Carolina. Some of their goals for this year are make Asheville the safest city in America, eliminate our open air drug market, hold the line on taxes, keep our savings account in place. If we pass any new laws, make sure we properly fund them and enforce them. Now, those aren't liberal policies, those are conservative policies. Things I've been fighting for from day one. If you're willing to fight and stand firm, you can affect change. That's the same thing I'll do in Washington, except it'll be easier. It won't be 6-1. I'll have more tools, more opportunity to eliminate the absurdity. I'll be on every TV program I can. I'll be that guy at 2:00 AM in the morning there on C-SPAN, talking to an empty chamber. And there are other people who think the same way. I won't be on a 6-1 situation. There'll be other minds that I can embrace and grab hold of and we can do battle. Who's the anthropologist? Oh my gosh, it's been a long day today. Who's the famous anthropologist? Female?
Margaret Marley.
Thank you. How'd that word female trigger everybody? Boy, that brought it out. Do you remember her famous quote about change? She said, "Change can successfully occur out of the actions of a very few worst of this effect." As a matter of fact, that's the only way that change ever occurs. You start small and build from there. So that's what I'll do. I'm going up there to fight. I'm not going up there to play the game. Nancy's gonna know my name and be, she already knows my name. It's amazing how, when you fight, how many people know your name. Our Bunkham County Chair went up to New York at some meeting of the Black Coalition politicians and he said, he had people coming up to him saying, who's this Munk Power guy down there in North Carolina? That came up yesterday too, some politi, oh, we were at, last night, we were at a meeting and a dear lady there, Trudy Whalen, Whalen, a representative from Rivard, said, do you accept contributions from outside the district? And I said, well, sure, from individuals. I said, why? She said, well, there's a bunch of people in the state legislative down here just intrigued with what you're doing and they want to help you out. And she took how many cards with her? Somebody said she took six or a dozen.
Fifteen cards.
How many?
Fifteen cards.
Fifteen cards, okay. It's amazing if you're willing to stand firm, what you can create, the momentum you create. And that's what I'll do. I'm going there to fight. Not to fight for fight's sake, and look at me. Do I look like a grizzly bear? I don't fight with anger. I fight with words, with knowledge, and most importantly, the truth. That's the hardest thing in the world for a politician to get a hold of. The truth. Your staff tries to hide it, everybody tries to hide it, but the truth is crucial. So that's how I'll do it, sir. So that's how I'll do it, sir. That's the only way you know about me, is because I follow that model in Asheville, and Asheville is no different than Washington, it's the same game, just a bigger arena up there, and I can handle it.
About workers, that the immigrants are willing to work at a lower wage, and I think that's because they have no other opportunity. And I think that too many have other opportunities, like of welfare and other means to survive without working, and so I would just ask you to address that.
Stan, it's $4 a day, most recently, time I looked at it, which has been about a year ago, I made a presentation to Council, trying to get some immigration policy established there, or make sure Asheville didn't become a sanctuary city, frankly. $4 a day, so coming here, I mean, extremely grateful. I'll tell you a little sidebar, a little sidebar on that. One of the problems is a lot of that money they make goes back to Mexico. Mexico's two primary exports are oil and people, and, and one of their primary imports is the US dollar, and that's wrong. Another part of the problem, or the equation that's wrong, is we're not uplifting our own poor. Wages are artificially suppressed with this imported labor pool willing to work for less. That's wrong. That's not the free enterprise system, that's rigging the deal. And that's one of the things I'm very frustrated with, with my party, is that, and if you're wondering, both parties are complicit in what I consider one of the greatest illegal conspiracies in America's history, if not the greatest. The Republican Party likes the cheap labor, the Democrat Party likes the opportunity to get new voters, and both of them go along with this for different reasons, but wrong reasons. We're, we're impairing the ability of the free market economy to work as it should, and I promise you that's the case. The last time I spent the night in public housing in Asheville, North Carolina, I spent the night in Devervee one night, listened to drug dealers outside my window all night long, at 7:00 in the morning, they got on the bus and rode off. I left, went to another development about that time, there were three drug dealers on the corner, I drove on in, and there were three people, three other people, sitting on a bench in the rain. I stopped and asked them what they were gonna do. "I work at Burger King, I work at McDonald's, I work somewhere else." They all work for close to minimum wage, they're stuck in public housing, and that's wrong. If you've got 100 psychologists, that's what I do for a profession, and one guy who knows how to flip burgers, the guy who knows how to flip burgers ought to make more than psychologists do. But we've rigged the system, and a man can't work at Burger King and uplift himself, and that's wrong. You and I should not import a labor pool so we can spend a quarter less for a hamburger. We should spend a quarter more for hamburger, whatever the free market economy does, let the lake rise and fall with the rain. We should spend a quarter more for a hamburger and help that person get on their feet, but the, don't have to rig the system, let it float naturally, get on their feet and, and build, have a future. Not, not have a deal where 70% of the black males in Asheville drop out of school, and a bunch of them get caught up in the drug world, because at least they got, they'll be a shooting star, but at least they've got some money, some bling, some dignity, and their own version of dignity, and a gun in their pocket, some power. Well, that's corrupting our system, it's corrupting your system over here in Haywood County. You want to talk about terrorism, the number one terrorist threat to America is not Al Qaeda, the number one terrorist threat to America are drugs. It's killing lots of people every year, legal ones and illegal ones. So that's how I feel about that, sir, and that's, I'm not willing, I think, again, speaking for voices, for people who don't have a voice. That's what America does today, we, we take advantage of the people who, who don't have a voice. We'll, we'll keep somebody that murders, two young ladies in Texas, we'll keep him on death row, and hundreds of people will fight for him, for 10, 12, however many years. The UN will get involved, international courts will get involved, he's got a voice. But a newborn or a newly conceived child doesn't have a voice, and we'll hold up our hands and say, "It's okay to kill that child." And I think that's wrong. I think that's wrong, the way we do that to a lot of people who don't have a voice, and I'm about fighting it.
Get indulged in a little bit, this will take a minute to set the stage, okay? What I want to talk about is Social Security.
Yes, sir.
In the context of the national debt and the unfunded liability that you talked about.
Let, let, I've changed my mind, let me add a song.
No, you're getting this one now.
Too late.
All right. The national debt is $9 trillion.
Closer to 10.
Well, it's nine, it's nine, the GDP is 15, 16, somewhere in there, trillion dollars, so, and the unfunded liability is about $50 trillion. 85% of the unfunded.
It's about 70, and some people say 90 trillion.
That's fine. 85% of it is Social Security and Medicare, okay? I was in the Reagan White House in 1981.
Well, that must have been.
And we, we looked at three ways to try to deal with the long-term Social Security problem. One was to fix the scam that is early retirement, where people receive entirely too much, almost double, what they ought to by actuarial tables. The second was to fix.
In other words, we're abandoning the foundation of the original program, which was, it kicked in after you died statistically, instead of, yes, yes.
But, I mean, actuarially, you ought to get 55% of your long-term, and not 80% at 62, okay? So that was one, one idea. Another idea was to fix the inflation index, so that it reflected what old people, what older people, sorry, I'm one of them, actually spent money on. And the third was to fix.
Don't you love the way they've done that? Got interrupted. You know, they, out of the Consumer Price Index, they've taken out fuel and food, and older people don't spend any money on fuel and food, do they?
But they spend relatively little on housing, I don't have. And the third thing was to fix the, the double indexation of the 70s, and bring that down to something that's more reasonable. All three of those were opposed by Pauline Pickle. You may have, may remember that name, he's a congressman from Florida, he was the chairman of the Social Security Committee at the time. He said, "Don't even bring this to my attention." And so that whole idea, and all those ideas were scrapped, because we needed, the administration needed Pickle on the tax cuts, okay? 1991, the elder Bush passed the largest tax increase in the history of the country at the time, to stopgap Social Security for a few more years. Bad advice by his staff, but he did it. Clinton went eight years, did a commission on Social Security and did nothing. In 2005, Bush, 43, said, "Let's try private accounts, let's look at this thing structurally," and it got absolutely nowhere, even the Republicans said dead on arrival. Here's a question. When you get to Washington, what's on the table for you on Social Security reform?
All of the above. Everybody's gonna have to suffer to get it solved again. Now, I don't agree with your figures, I, I think, I think when you look more deeply at the reality, you look at the Consumer Price Index, you look at our growth potential, we have to, to make up for those promised entitlements, we have to have double-digit growth from now on. When have we ever had double-digit growth? The equation does not work. This gentleman I, who, he's a very nice gentleman, he's helpful, he knows his facts, and he knows a lot more about this subject than I do, but I'm, I'm sorry, I don't buy into the math, and I do not see America as having an ascending economy that gives me faith. I do not think we have the government wisdom today that we had at the end of World War II. I don't think we have the, the character of people in America. We have a lot of them. But at the end of World War II, what do they call that generation? The Greatest Generation. Look at the sacrifices and struggles they've been through, they knew how bad it could be, the Depression and the war, there was a different attitude. So I can't find the optimism that I think that, that this good gentleman might be able to. That doesn't mean it's hopeless, but everybody's gonna have to be involved in the sacrifice. Now, right now, what we're doing is the same thing we always do, which is, we put it off on the people who don't have a voice. If you're under 40 in this country, everybody's under 40 in here, if you're willing to, raise your hand. We got, we got a few, all right. You ought to be the most conservative Republicans in the world, you ought to be screaming and yelling and hollering at the rest of us, you ought to be throwing, wadding up paper, hitting us in the back of the head from the back of the room for what we're doing to you. By the time we get through with Social Security in just a few years, I think it's about 15 years, and 15 years goes fast, it will take two young people to support one of the rest of us on Social Security. That's wrong. When it first started out, I think the figure was 43, 47? For every person on Social Security, they had 47 people backing them up. You know when you started drawing Social Security? Couple of years after you were supposed to have died. And it's become a somewhat corrupted retirement plan, instead of a safety net for people, and an overly generous one, under many circumstances, one that's expected. So what do we do? The same thing government always does in America, or does now, we pass off the deal on the people who don't have a voice, who don't get it. How many people in their 20s worry about Social Security? And worry about the burden, or pay any attention to that? In your 20s, you're watching MTV. You're not watching, you know, C-SPAN and learning about these things, the news channels. So we shuffle it off on them. What I'm gonna fight for, everybody's gonna have to make some sacrifice. We're gonna have to change the formula everywhere, reduce benefits, extend the retirement age, and a host of other things. But the only way it's gonna work is if people believe we're applying it fairly. And I've gotta tell you, it's the people that are benefiting from Social Security who are gonna have to show the most courage. They're gonna have to show the most courage, and be willing to, to absorb, recognize that they were provided false promises about what Social Security could actually do, and recognize that they have to care about those who come later. Now, will that happen?
Any chance they could just give us back our money?
I'll ask. It's, it's a great question. A fair piece of, for everybody, that's what I'm advocating for. I can tell you what's probably gonna happen. Nothing until it reaches a crisis mode.
It's crisis now.
Yeah. Well, not, it's in crisis for a smart person thinking ahead and paying attention, but it hasn't hit the wall yet. Yes, sir?
On the subject of Social Security, you have the SSI, you have prisoners collecting Social Security, you have illegals collecting Social Security. I mean, why don't you just stop that clock? That would cut out a lot of it.
That's, that's one of the first things you have to do, is stop the federal government from robbing Social Security. Now, there's some arguments about that, you know, basically what they have is safe on this side of the room, and a safe on this side of the room, and they take money out of this side and put an IOU in this side. Well, that, that sounds bad, you know, we're taking money and swapping paper, but, you know, we, we, we have to sell that debt to somebody, and, and that's probably, the US government's probably as good a thing to invest that money in as you can find. That's not the bigger way, even though that concept doesn't smell good. That's probably not the bigger way that the government, that, that Congress robs Social Security. They rob Social Security by just what you said. They keep adding new programs. They keep expanding the programs, and expanding the promises, and expanding the expectations, and creating a socialistic state.
Buying votes.
Yes, yes, and that's wrong, and it's betraying, again, our children and grandchildren.
Congress, would you be willing to support lowering the corporate tax rate as a way of keeping manufacturing jobs here in America, rather than, and fight against any program that hinted at protectionism?
I'm, I'm glad you said that. There are a couple of things that I think we need to do. I think we need to quit artificially, you know, we, I talked about entitlements, there's individual welfare, there's community welfare, which are earmarks, and pork, which I hope somebody will ask me about that. There's corporate welfare, there's international welfare, I'm sorry, I'm not a big believer in welfare. You're talking about, we're, we're talking corporate welfare. I think we need to eliminate that. All these subsidies that artificially prop up farmers, and they become dependent on it, and it is a constant juggling act, and the federal government is not good at, at juggling, we need to, we need to stop that. The tax code, speaking of rigging, asked the question last night, I thought the federal tax code was 50,000 pages, somebody told me it's closer to 60, 70,000 pages. They're not writing 70,000 pages, if that's accurate, of, of tax code on, on income tax to give the middle class a better deal. That's rigging it for some special interest. And I think we need to reform our tax code, and I can tell you, of all the, the policies on the plate, on the table, I like. Fair tax is a consumption tax, it makes sense to me, more than any of the rest of it do. And then you gotta create a level playing field for American manufacturing. We do a whole lot of things better than any place in the world, but we're competing against an unlevel playing field. China is eating our lunch. I had a manufacturer tell me a while back, we were, we were grouse hunting, only kind of hunting I know that I do anymore, since I got back to Vietnam, was grouse hunting. I do that because they win all the time. I never got the grouse, hardest thing in the world to hit, well, we were grouse hunting, and as usual, I'm sitting, shooting up the woods. And this guy said, "We can design a product, get it patented, manufacture it, and within three to six months, it'll be coming out of China as good, or better, and cheaper." They have no, they're totally indifferent, you have to bear with me, sir, they're totally indifferent to our patent law, indifferent to our patent laws. China, in the, in the Olympics, showed us their national character, or the national character of their government with gymnastics. What did they do with gymn, sir, you're gonna have to be patient, what'd they do with gymnastics?
They cheated.
You can get a chance. Hmm? Anybody see that? They cheated in front of the whole world. You're supposed to be 16 to be in gym, to be in the Olympics in gymnastics, they have these 11 and 12-year-olds, something about, if you're lighter, more agile, and so on and so forth. And they, they gave them passports saying they were 16, they cheated in front of the whole world. If they'll do that to win an Olympics, what will they do to win a dollar? They fixed their currency, they fixed the whole deal. We have to help American manufacturing compete with two big things, reform of the tax code. I'd much rather see the tax code be on individuals, on individuals, number one. And then number two, regulatory reform. And what's the best way to do that? If you're going to make a rule, enforce it with total active enthusiasm. What we got now is the worst of all worlds, a lot of rules and marginal enforcement, a lot of illusion of control with very marginal enforcement, and that's wrong. So fair tax in terms of reform, and we're, we're creating an unlevel playing field for manufacturing, and I think we need to be smarter about that. The rest of the world, not only, a lot of the world does not tax their industry, they give them passes and subsidies to, to put us out of business, and they're very, very good at it. Sir, you, you seem to have, need to say something, I want you to get a chance, then we'll have you back to these questions.
Fine, fine. I'll just say, interesting, Johnny bought some tomato sticks and melons a few weeks ago, tomato sticks, and they were made in China. And I wonder how they could ship sticks from China to the United States cheaper than the American companies can.
Right, right. China's not our enemy, not yet. I don't think we should treat them as our enemy. We don't treat, need to treat anybody as our enemy. But by golly, we sure need to hold on to that word fairness. And there, there are things where we don't play it fair, farm subsidies is one of the big, big ways. Corn-based ethanol was one of the worst things, we're speaking of the Hispanic, the Latino people. South of us, one of the worst things we could have done, to take food out of people's mouths to put fuel in our cars. Nothing about that equation worked, except it was an easy thing for Congress to do, and appear to be doing something. Again, the, the folks with no voice were the ones that got trampled in that deal.
Why did you push kutsu?
Kutsu? Yeah, they hadn't, they hadn't picked up on that one yet, have they? They don't know what a, we, we don't need oil fields, we don't need to be drilling, we, we got kutsu, we can turn it into ethanol. Yes, sir.
Dr. Munk Power, I'm, I admire your, your goals and your principles, and I get the impression you have enough true grit to stick by them, no matter what. I want you to represent me in Congress.
Thank you, sir.
My question is, how do you, and I think that sending principled mavericks is the way we're gonna change Congress, and the changing the politics of this country.
Yes, sir.
As an individual, how do you see your chances of being effective during your first term in Congress? You've got a big machine to fight against.
I will be at least as effective as the people who are serving their fifth term in Congress. Or sixth, or tenth. Do you, who do you see being effective in Congress? The measurement of whether you're effective in Congress or not is, currently is how much pork you bring back to your constituency. I'm sorry, that's not what I'm about. Now, I believe infrastructure, highway system, the promises that we've made, veteran services, 9,000 people on the waiting list for S, for, for Social Security disability, and our Greenville District Office, 9,000 people, last time I checked, which has been about three months ago, 9,000 people on the waiting list. Let's assume for the sake of argument, a third of those people. Let's assume, for the sake of argument, a third of those people are trying to manipulate and con the system. That still leaves 6,000 people standing, waiting, trying to get way through that system. That's wrong. That's the kind of thing I'm gonna fight. We need to fix that. We made the promises. We need to, we need to honor those promises. But when it comes to pork, in front of our city county plaza, they're building a nice park in Asheville, out of a cost of $20 million, which originally was about 12, four, 1/4 of the budget, excuse me, 1/4 of the budget, three times four, 1/3 of the budget. 1/3 of the budget came from the federal government. Borrowing money to build a park that my children and your children and grandchildren are gonna have to pay for in front of Asheville City Hall, that's wrong. I won't do it. If you're looking for a guy to bring more pork back to Haywood County, I'm afraid I'm not the guy. If you're looking for a guy to, to fight to keep our money in our pocket and not send it off to Washington and let them skim it and give it out, you know, to special interests and to get people reelected, I am that guy. And I'll fight hard for that. Yes, sir?
It's a real billion-dollar project. It's basically to make the military generals' airline cruisers more luxury. I'm sure y'all have heard about this, 'cause it's really controversial. And they're putting all this money into having sleeper cabins and, you know, wood paneling and all this kind of stuff in their airlines, so that they can fly over to Iraq and back in more style. So speaking of being...
I'm totally in support of that. But I miss...
Speaking about being more careful with taxpayers' dollars, how do you plan to take our largest spending in our country right now, which is our military budget, and make that more efficient? Because if I look at Pat Place Park in Asheville, that is like pennies compared to what we spend in the military.
I care, I care about the pennies too, and you gotta start somewhere, but she's, she's...
Well, I'm familiar with about the day, which is the military.
All right. She's asked, she's asked me a great question. Let me tie that in with Iraq. I don't have any hesitancy at all telling you, I've been in a war. It was no big deal, but I was in harm's way. I saw bad things happen. I know what war does. I was 18 when I was there, joined when I was 17. I don't, I don't like war. But I believe with all my heart, we live in a dangerous world, and we need a very strong military to protect America. I don't think we do a good job with that. I think we have engaged in too many foreign entanglements that we're not prepared to fulfill. I do not believe in halfway wars. I think it's terrible what we did to the men and women who served, mostly men, who served in Vietnam. I think it's terrible what we're doing to the men and women in Iraq. When you go into a war with half a heart, and we have, we have not been in a war with a full heart since 1944. 1944. We kinda gave in to the Russians and put a lot of people in bondage in 45. Korea was a stalemate, Vietnam, and so on and so forth. I think if you go to war, do you go to war with a full heart, you stay out of it. I have a hard time, that we have so many troops in so many foreign countries. I think in Germany alone, we've got 50,000 people right now. Yeah, it's wrong. Now, strong military, I'm, I'm for that. But spending a lot of money all over the country trying to police the whole world, we can't even police America. We've got a rampant drug problem all over this country. You have crack cocaine houses all over Haywood County. By one, by, by chance you can't find one, all you gotta do is come to Asheville. We got them all over Asheville. We can't protect our own borders. We can't run our own government, but we seem to think we're geniuses at geopolitics. I don't think we are. I'd like to, said this before you got here, I like to fight waste and corruption. I don't think we should have gone to Iraq. I think the bigger fight was in Afghanistan and other places. But it's a mute argument now. We're there, and I believe we should fight it out to a proper conclusion. I think we went there arrogantly, to run and leave now with equal arrogance is the wrong thing to do. I think we betrayed the men and women who have served and died there, and I've talked to a lot of them, and they don't wanna be betrayed. I felt betrayed. I remember the end of, of the Vietnam War. I remember how, anybody, did anybody go there? Anybody in the group? I remember, I'll never forget when it ended. I'll never forget that. I thought, gosh, the waste, all the people that suffered and died. And the deaths weren't, the, 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 the 57,000 Muslim men who died, American men who died in Vietnam was just the beginning. We lost another quarter of a million plus to suicide, drug overdoses, and other things, self-destructive behaviors. Well, we shouldn't do that today. I'm not gonna be a part of that. So how would I get involved in Iraq? Fighting that waste, that I mentioned earlier. Fighting that corruption, which is rampant, and there's a lot of it. And I resent the fact that we've put in all this money. I'll tell you something I resent. This large bank account they have of billions and billions of dollars, while we're taking money out of our children's mouths, out of our schools and everything, to fund their effort. Do you know about that? How big is that figure? How big is that figure? Was it 70 something billion dollars?
70 billion.
Hmm?
70 billion.
Yeah. They've got something in a bank account that they don't wanna tap into. They're not helping subsidize the fight. That's greedy, that's the same deal. It's the thing I, I resent so much about illegal immigration and the people who deploy them, it is using America, using America, instead of working with America. And I'm not gonna be a part of that equation, so that's what I would do. You, you talk about waste, I'm sorry, but illegal immigration, the social services and educational and healthcare costs of that illegal immigration pool we have in America, which is around 15, give or take, 5 million people, and, or 15 million plus in America, costs more than the war in Iraq does. In the city of Asheville, one illegal, one child from an illegal immigrant family costs the city of Asheville taxpayer $15,000. $15,000. There's a much larger story. I'm gonna fight that. I'm gonna fight waste wherever I find it.